Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear today.
We also have Julie and Colin here from our team. What's up guys?
Hello.
What's going on everyone?
We're thrilled as always to have you here today where we are going to be talking about a subject that you might have found a little tricky and that is talking about yourself as a brand partner. There are a number of different ways that we can and should be introducing ourselves, talking about who we are, talking about what we do. And then there's the question of what about the young living of it all, right? So we're going to get into all of that today and very importantly, how we can put these things onto our website. So for those of you who are building a personal website with Get Oiling, if you have one and you want to make it even better, you're going to love what we're talking about here today. And if you're just getting started, you're going to start to kind of learn the differences in the ways that you communicate and talk about yourself. And I'll show you exactly where you can go with your built-in Get Oiling website theme to put this same kind of great information that can help you be more effective when you're putting yourself out there. So go ahead and let us know in the chat where you're coming in from. We're so excited to have you here today. We have a lot to get into, a lot, lot of sort of stuff to talk through as well as some show and tell. And we do have someone signed up for a live work review. So again, thrilled to have you head over into the chat. It's always a party here and we're always thrilled to have you. So I'm going to go ahead and we're going to pop out a video and get into slides because like I mentioned, we have a lot to get into today and we're thrilled to do it. So today, as promised, our subject is the About Me page. We're going to talk about how you can share your story on your website. What parts of your story do you include? What do you say and where to make yourself really effective? Not only in sharing and putting yourself out there, but also importantly, in really defining who you are so that people understand and can take action. So today, we are going to be first introducing an exciting new interactive page feature. And that's something that Greg is going to share with us. We're going to get into what is in an effective About Me page. We'll talk about what About Me is versus a bio and why both are important and needed. We'll also go through a formula and a workflow for coming up with what to say on your About Me page and your bio. And we'll talk about how we can set these up in Get Oiling simply and beautifully. And then of course, as always, we have live help and Q and A on this call. This is a live work session, so we invite you to add your questions to the Q and A. We are here to help you throughout today's call. If you are watching this from our Facebook group or you're checking us out on YouTube in the future, you could go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be invited to join us live on Zoom here every Thursday at noon US Eastern time. And if you would like to work together on a live call, you can schedule time on a call like this one where we can set aside dedicated space to work together. And you can do that at getoiling.com/web site review. And if you would just like for somebody to do stuff for you or you want to hire someone to work alongside you, that's also doable. Getoiling.com/conceiers, you can learn more about our talented team and all the ways they can help you. Now, before we get into today's content, talking about About Pages, I'd like to toss this over to Greg, who's going to show us an exciting new feature that's going to be especially cool for those of you who are creating things like sales pages and time sensitive events that you're promoting. Take it away Greg.
Awesome. Thanks Ashley. Let me share my screen here. I think we got it going. Yeah, if you've been watching here and sending the last few weeks or so, we've been rolling out some cool new widgets on the page builder. And there's another one that has been added to the arsenal here too. If you've been in the Facebook group, I think you already know what it is, but I'll dive in. So on any page, I'm just going to grab a blank template here. On any of the pages, when you're adding a section. This is being a little weird. We click on add here and there's this interactive section that has been, you know, was added recently. Here's the accordion and the carousel that have been there before, but there's a new countdown timer here as well. So you can see it just added a countdown timer. And when you click on it, it lets you edit it here. And this is a, it also, when it expired, one of the cool things is when it expires, you can have it go to a different address. So you know, for example, if you have a limited time offer, you can truly make it a limited time offer automatically by putting a countdown timer in there that sends them to another page when they're done. I mean, operating the countdown timer is pretty straightforward. Pick when it goes. I think it just defaults to a couple of hours out in the future. Pick your date and time, whatever, it'll adjust it automatically. You can adjust the size, change the font if you want to, you know, change the colors, background, whatever you want to do with it. There's all sorts of different possibilities for styling. And then it's in place and then, you know, it'll just count down. And if you put a URL in there, then it'll, once it expires, not in the page editor of course, but when you're viewing the actual page, it'll send them on to that other location once it expires. So this is a cool feature that previously had a, have a third-party widget to do. And now this is easy and kind of baked in. But there's, you know, there's also more like, so all those widgets that were there before, the accordion, the carousel, now the countdown timer. Those can also be added inside of a section and not just in a section. So you can add them in a section like I just did, you know, if you come in here and you can add them, the interactive ones. Or let's say you want, I mean, for some reason you want a countdown timer here instead. So I'll just delete this photo in this template, go up to add element and there's a new interactive button here, a new interactive tab. And then you can add any of these, the accordion, the carousel, the countdown timer, whatever you want. And they work similarly. So once it's added, you can go ahead and click it, adjust it however you want to, just like I showed you before. You can even delete it down here in the corner if you, if you, if you're done with it. But then yeah, you can put it kind of anywhere you want to in the page, which is, you know, great for page layouts. If you want to change the column width, you can totally do that as well. Like, okay, I want to make this one a little bit, I suppose I have to shrink this one or no, I wanted to shrink this one and then make this one wider. You know, so it works within the column layouts and all that. So you can have what you need there and kind of the flexibility of the page layouts. And yeah, so anyway, hopefully this helps make your pages a little more fun and your sales pages a little more, you know, have more of a hard deadline on them. If you have some offer that's expiring or some limited time thing that you're promoting there. So yeah, that's what I've got Ashley, back to you.
Awesome. Thank you Greg. So excited to have that and start using that on our sales pages, which we will be doing some updated sales training, sales page training here in the future for those of you who are interested. So let's get back into it. Today, we're of course talking about About Me pages. How many of us, let me know if you're here in the chat, you can raise your hand or you can say me in the chat. Do you have an About Me page on your website? Is this something that you have? Let us know. Got some yeses, got a couple no's. Okay, awesome. Well, we've got a lot to cover today around creating one, but there are some other elements of or sort of related pieces to the About Me page that you're also going to want to have figured out. And this actually has a really big impact on how you show up, not just on your website. So let's talk about the difference between a bio and an About Me page. Now, a bio is essentially going to be two to three short paragraphs that really concisely share who you are and what you do. This is the kind of thing that can often be seen written in the third person, meaning someone is talking about you versus you saying hello, I am. It is saying you are, this person is, right? And typically you're going to see a bio in your social media account. So if you have a LinkedIn account, this of course is going to go in that main section there. This could go on other social media accounts in your bio section. If you have a press kit on your website, if you're someone who would like to be interviewed as an expert by your local news or by even bigger outlets, this is the kind of thing that you want to have there. It's a quick and easy place for someone who needs to know, to grab information about you so that they could refer you to someone, so that they could effectively talk about you, et cetera. So if you are ever going to be giving a talk, maybe hosted by someone else, they're going to need a bio from you. If you are going to be interviewed on a video or a podcast, or you're going to guest post on someone's blog, a bio is something that you're going to need and it's short, it's sweet, and it is something that you ought to have, but it is different from your About Me page on your website. Now, your About Me page, different from your bio, which can show up in a lot of places. Your About Me page is a dedicated page on your own website. And it's a place where you get to actually speak directly to your ideal client or customer. You're actually having sort of an on-page conversation with your person that you can't do in a couple of quick, short paragraphs that talk about who you are and what you do, right? A bio just cuts to the chase, but an About Page really is, it's almost a conversation, right? It's written more like a letter where you're speaking to your person directly. And it's something that you can of course format to include things like testimonials and stories. And importantly, it includes a call to action to take advantage of a lead magnet that you offer, sign up for your newsletter, opt in to get on a call with you or some other offer that you're making on your website. So About Me pages are ultimately the place on your website where people go to find out if you're a fit for them. If someone is a great lead and they found your website, there's a really solid chance that the second place they go after wherever their first place is, which might be a blog post or a page you've shared online. The second place they're probably going to go is to your About Page. If they like what you have to say, because now they want to know more about you and what's in it for them, right? So these are going to be the more serious and inquisitive people who arrive at your website than the people who are just simply on your homepage or your blog. They're going to be looking for About because they're curious about what more there is from you and whether or not you're someone that they want to continue hearing from. So this is a fantastic opportunity to connect more deeply with the people that you would like to be having conversations with, sharing Young Living with, right? And if you can quickly answer, meaning in this page, what's in it for me? If you can deliver this, this information on this About Me page in such a way that you are answering the unspoken question in the back of your visitor's mind, right? What's in all this for me? Then you win. And this is probably the most powerful place on your website to get this done. And what, the way that we get this done and why it's so powerful is because we get to tell a story and invite them into it, right? It's either your story or one of someone who you've helped, right? That your ideal person is really going to relate to. They begin to kind of place themselves into that story, relate to what you are saying, and then ultimately are much more likely to move forward with whatever it is that you are offering to them, right? Again, a lead magnet, sign up for my newsletter, get on a call with me, join my lead group, et cetera. They're going to be more likely to do this here because of this story, because of that connection than they are on any other part of your website. And of course, as a result, this means this is one of the best places to collect leads on your site. All right. So one of the quick things that I want to make sure that we're super duper clear on, neither of these things are your Young Living testimonial. That is a third and very important thing, but it is not a thing that needs to live front and center anywhere on your website. The reason why is people need to trust you first and be curious and interested first before they care about hearing your product story, right? Your story with Young Living. We need to do the work of relating to people first and having them understand that you might actually be somebody who could help them with something that matters to them before they even want to hear the name Young Living and before they would even want to know what your specific product testimonial is. Now, it is important for you to have your Young Living story. And that's the kind of thing that you share privately with someone after you have shared or before setting up the share of Young Living, say in a private conversation in your home or in a conversation that you're having with someone just before you introduce them to product, right? It's very valuable. It's very important, but that's not what we're here to talk about today. So now let's get into this. How do I go about creating my About Me page? Well, before you even begin to create your About Me page, let's get our bio out of the way. Because a lot of us tend to kind of conflate one versus the other. And the bio is actually a lot easier to write because it's short and it's to the point. And if we've got that out of the way, we know where we can put it. We can then begin to think more creatively and get into more of the story that we need to invite our ideal client into. So first, let's write our bio. Now, our bio is going to be really simple. Like I mentioned, we want to condense your name, who you help and how into one to two sentences, right? And in the second paragraph, we want to either use results of someone who you've helped, right? To demonstrate how effective you are at what you do, or you're going to share a little bit of your own results, right? I've been able to accomplish XYZ thing, right? Or I help people get XYZ thing. I have helped this many people do this, that, or the other thing, right? And here, if you have it, you want to include any kind of relevant education or experience, right? If you are a wellness coach, then you might want to mention certifications if you have it. It's not the most important thing. If you have it, put it here, of course. You can alternately cast vision for the future. I am going to be, by the way, if you guys are starting to get lost here, I'm going to show you a literal example of all of this in the next slide. So hold tight. So first part of this, who you are, who you help and how. Second part, here is how I've done it, how successful I've been at doing it. That's either for yourself or for others. You're going to mention any kind of supporting information such as I have this experience or you cast vision for what you're going to do with this. And then you can include a little bit of information about you as a final touch, as a way to insert really some personality here to keep this from being quite so flat. Let's take a look at what this looks like. First noting, when I say paragraphs here, I'm not speaking academically, I'm speaking as a copywriter. You want to start thinking about putting on a copywriter hat when you are planning to communicate online, period. And a copywriter is more concerned with how the information is received and acted upon, right? Than they are with formalities. So in this case, if it drags on for a couple of lines and it's still one sentence, it's a paragraph, right? Paragraphs in copywriting are often a one or two sentences and that's it. So here's an example. First, Jane is a wellness consultant. You don't have to be certified to be a wellness consultant, you guys. You can call yourselves this if you're dedicated to helping people change their wellness with Young Living. Jane is a wellness consultant who helps women, oh, I forgot here, women in their 40s, 40s isn't there, sorry. Jane is a wellness consultant who helps women in their 40s to rediscover their energy and vitality so they can live younger, longer. Through her workshops, free resources and group programs, she has helped over a hundred women sleep better, drop unwanted pounds and feel 10 years younger. After discovering the means and methods to recover from decades of lost sleep, chronic inflammation and digestive issues, in 2014, she committed to bringing this information to women around the world full-time. When she's not publishing, teaching or working with clients, you can find Jane in her herb garden, attending Tai Chi classes in her favorite park or in the kitchen, tending to her latest ferments. You do not have to have certification for anything. This is someone who is a Young Living brand partner. All right. And you don't have to narrow down to women in their 40s either. But you can say that you are a wellness consultant who helps some type of person get this thing that they really want, so that they can have the thing that they really, really want. Workshops, free resources, group programs, you guys workshops. Hold Zoom classes once a month, free resources, have a blog, right? Group programs, that can literally be the group where you serve your Young Living customers, right? So here you go. And yes, this is, it's short and sweet. And it is very helpful for a bio like this to be written in the third person, but it does not have to be. It's not required. If you are someone who intends to be published and for your publications to be circulated widely, I would put yours in the third person because this does look like something you would see on a book jacket, right? And you want to have something like this that a journalist could use, right? Who's introducing you or the leader of a conference can use to introduce you when you walk on stage. So if that is how you would be using your bio, then write it in the third person. You could of course write this in the first person as well. All right. So let's get our bio out of the way, short and sweet. So with that out of the way, we can now focus on our About Me page. First, let's talk about what is in an About Me page. First, we need at least one photo of you that is smiling and looking at the camera. Because essentially what this is, is you meeting somebody. You're at a conference, you're at a party and you meet somebody and you're smiling at them and you're shaking their hand, saying hello and you're introducing yourselves, right? The vibe of this page is exactly that. I am meeting you. We want to meet each other. We want to talk to each other and I'm going to speak my part of the conversation and assume yours. Cool. All right. So we're also going to have our who I help and how statement. You saw a little bit of that in the bio, right? I help women rediscover their vitality and energy so that they can live younger, longer. That's a, one way you could look at what you say about what you do, find something that you really love. Don't think too hard about it. Don't stress too much over it. You could always change it. You also again, want to include some little bit of background that you have put in context with your ideal client's currency, currency meaning what's important to them. We want to be making this for them. Our bio is about us. It does say About Me, right? Our About Me page is also about you, but the delivery is about them. Okay. So here we want to also include information that relates to and resonates with your ideal client. You want to, if you have them, include any client's stories or testimonials. If you don't have them yet, but you have customers who you've been helping, go to them. Since we started working together, since I started helping you get these products, what are some things that have happened for you? Right? That's through your help. You aren't taking credit for all the Young Living products, but you are the connection, right? So get those study, those case studies, those testimonials, if you've got them, include them. You also want to include how to work with you. For the majority of us, this is going to be inviting them to check out your events, to attend an event or to, or to reach out personally, maybe with the contact button or to find you on social or to schedule a call with you, right? And then finally, you want to have some kind of a call to action to, to take that next step, maybe to have a conversation, but don't miss this opportunity to passively collect a lead who's not ready to talk to you yet, but might be in the future. So if you have a funnel, if you have a lead magnet, you have some kind of free offer, make sure that you have that included on this page so that you can collect this lead. All right. Now, before you write your About Me page, I want us to temporarily forget about ourselves and about Young Living. We're going to write an About Me page, not about us and definitely not about Young Living, okay? So here's our prep steps, right? This is how we are going to get this done. First, I want you to think about your best or favorite customer or client. This is someone who you've worked with and if you could clone them, you would have hundreds of them in your business. Who is this person? And this person could also be the previous version of you before you discovered Young Living and got onto this path that you're on today, right? If you haven't worked with a lot of people and you're not sure who, you know, who you would focus on, think about the you that used to exist, right? Before you were renewed, before your life changed, after discovering and using Young Living products, okay? Think about what their or your biggest frustrations, challenges, needs are, right? Because they don't have what you have. They don't know what you know. What are they struggling with? What are they frustrated about? What do they need? And what do they think they need very specifically? Not what do you know they need? We all know that they need Nixia. They don't care. They don't know, right? They know that they need more energy. They know that they want to feel well when they wake up in the morning, right? Think about that. Then ask yourself, what do they value in their life and their work and their relationships? This is not a, you know, flat, black and white description of a person. We're thinking of a whole human. This is why it's really important for you to focus on one person here. Think about one person that you could really be talking to. With that person, again, if this is someone who you've worked with, what drew them to you in the first place? Or if this is you, what drew you to the path you're on in the first place? And what did they find most helpful about your work together? What do they appreciate the most about you personally? Right? And this is where you can relate to someone on a more personal level. Then, I want you to, after having thought about all of these things, rewind and imagine you beginning your conversation with this person or your former self from the very beginning. Hey, it's so great to meet you. I help this type of person get XYZ thing. And that person, when you say that, is going, oh my God, that's me. Tell me more, right? How did you get into doing that? And then you answer that, right? And this becomes really a conversation with that person, right? So answer these questions, really meditate on these questions. And then let's begin imagining our dialogue with that person. Then you want to get clear on what our call to action is going to be. After they have satisfied themselves with learning about you and how much you have in common and how clearly they know that you could help them, what's next? Where do we want them to go, right? So be clear on what you'll offer on the page and what that call to action is. And then we're going to connect the dots. How can you tell a story that places your offer as the solution? And the story it is, it's that conversation. Hey, this is me. Here's who I help and how I do it. They say, oh, that's awesome. How did you get started doing that? And then you share, right? Then you say, you know, back when I was in this position, these are the things that happened. And here's what I accomplished for myself and I decided that I had to keep doing this moving forward. And now I do workshops, I, I create free resources and I have a group that works together and supports each other on their journey. Are you interested in learning more? Head over here and let's hop on a call. Or are you looking for ways to improve this thing about your life? I have a free guide that shows you how to do that. Head over here, grab it, right? I offer free consults. Do you want one? Here's how you can get started, right? So here's the formula for writing your About Page. There is a sequence that we want to follow here. So first, we're going to introduce ourselves authentically and don't overthink this. This can literally be, hi, I am your name. Again, imagining you are having a conversation with this person actually in person, right? Hi, I am such and such person and you're smiling at the camera in that picture. And that is a, it's an understood handshake that's taking place on this page, right? You can include your who I help and how statement. Of course, if you have created your who I help and how statement, maybe in your bio, in the third person, you do want to modify that here because we are now speaking as us, first person. Because we're having a conversation. Then we're going to write out the story. And basically what that's going to look like is you're going to talk about the big problem that you or your client can relate to, right? So this is the problem you used to have. This is the problem you help people solve and that you've helped a lot of people solve maybe, right? And this is a problem, of course, that the person that is on this page maybe has or understands or relates to. All right. Talk about that problem. Then talk about your why, specifically why you do what you do now. So if you can recall, the example that I was kind of speaking to in the previous slide, this is just like that conversation that's taking place, right? Where we say, I help this person get, do we have these things? Hi, this is me. And they say, oh, it's amazing. Can you tell me more? And then you say, you know how, when you get this thing and do this thing, this other thing happens, right? You know how when you wake up and you feel this way and the rest of the day is awful or you can't lose those 20 pounds or whatever? Well, I figured out how to fix that. And I did that for myself or I have helped others do this, right? And, and then their next question to you is essentially, oh, that's amazing. How did you get started doing this? This is where we say, we insert our why. And you say, well, you know, a friend introduced me to this concept a handful of years ago. And I was skeptical at first, but once I really got the hang of it, things started really changing for me. And this is something that has helped me to rediscover a passion. And I am now on a mission to help women all over the world or to help nurses or to help whomever, right? Moms, whatever that is for you. I'm on a mission to help this type of person because it just matters so much to me because of this, right? So it's not our why, it's our why because I want to help you, okay? And then we paint the possibility, the picture of possibilities for your client, right? So this is where we say, when we work together, you'll be able to accomplish this, do this, do that, right? Or my clients have been able to do this, do this, do that, right? And here we want to gather testimonials or case studies or maybe sort of insert stories here that are effective if you have them. Because if we've just talked about the clients that we've helped or what's possible for them, we do want to apply social proof here if you have it. And then finally, we transition into your call to. And then finally, we transition into your call to action. Does that sound like something you would like to do? Is that something you'd be interested in? Grab this thing, schedule with me, get in touch, whatever that call to action is, all right? Now let's talk about the workflow of getting this done. Now, this is what we're doing on the page. When we go to Get Oiling and we build this page, this is what we're going to do, right? We're going to first introduce ourself authentically, right? We're going to, oh, I know this is, sorry, duplicate, it's a duplicate slide. So the workflow is this, right? This is how you create it. And then we're going to actually go over into Get Oiling, and we're going to include it in this order. Now, there are some best practices that I want you to to remember, and and I'll talk through those really quickly here as we get over to our pages. And I show you how to get this done. Now, Adrienne asked if these slides are available for review. I absolutely can make these slides available for review for you, for sure. So what we're gonna do is, there's a couple of things. Generally speaking, sorry, wrong share, want the smaller share here. Perfect. Okay, so we're going to, from our dashboard, we're gonna go over here to, we can actually go from right here to create and create a webpage, or we could just go over to website and blog and click pages. And we're going to add a page. Here's about pages. You have eight templates that you could use, right? Fantastic options here. I'm gonna grab this newer one, this gray about one. And we won't complete the entire thing here, but but this is more or less the formula that we're going to follow. Here in this section, this is where we're going to introduce yourself. Hi, I'm, my name, right? And this is my who I help and how statement, right? That's gonna go here. Obviously, this is going to be a little bit bigger, or sorry, it's gonna take up a little bit more space than this. Now, this is the mobile friendly version. Of course, you will want to swap out your images here, and they do indicate here the size of the image you would want to swap it out with. And you would take the same copy here from this section, and you would put it here. Now, in this next section, remember our story, our conversation. What are we talking about here? So we began with who I help and how. The next part is the big problem, right? So you know, this might be something like, does this sound like you, right? And then you can write out here the you know, maybe a bulleted list of of the things that that your person might be dealing with, right? Think two, think three, et cetera, right? Now, I don't want a button here. I don't need a call to action here, so I'm not gonna use a button. Of course, you can swap this out, and you could put another photo of you here, or you could even use an image that's maybe evocative of what you're talking about, right? So this is where we're talking about the problem that you know that they probably have, right? And again, we're thinking about your ideal person, one person, and they already exist to you. You want to clone them, and you want a lot of them. So talk to them here so that when they show up, they know you're talking to them, okay? So put something here that is going to speak to them and have them understand by reading this section that you are someone who gets them, and you are someone who can help them, okay? So do you ever feel like this, that, the other thing, right? Is it ever this or that for you, right? Have you ever felt this way? Is this like, what's that look like for you? How does that feel in your life? Are you struggling with XYZ thing? Now, you don't necessarily have to present it this way. It could be for you that you are telling a little bit of a story about you know, how difficult things were before you found your way to who you are and where you are today, right? So put that in the section here, and remember, if you have, in the case of this template, mobile mobile options, you're just going to use the same copy. Take note of the size of the font in the different sections, right? And just make sure, and actually, this is close to the same. This one's a bit smaller here, but you're going to use the same information and the same photos, right? Now, this may be where you prefer to get your get your testimonial in, right? So maybe what we would do right here is is we would, I'm gonna re-center this section, and I'm going to maybe add a testimonial section here. And I want this to it's gonna be an image, and you can use custom content if you want to, and this would simply allow you to type in testimonials, maybe have images and testimonials together here if that's something that you'd like to do. So this goes here. You can obviously add your testimonial for each one. You can add as many as you'd like that are available here, and you can put that into that section, or we could even replace this section with a testimonials carousel. And if I do this, let me see, if I go to style, I want this to fill the entire carousel. There we go. And you could do that in this one as well. So anyway, this would be a fine opportunity to introduce that, especially if you have in this section mentioned what it looks like to work with you, right? Or the problem that you were just talking about. This is essentially just an opportunity to inject some social proof, okay? Now you have an opportunity to introduce a why. Now, I don't understand why this is here, but it doesn't need to be there. This would be an opportunity to, here we go, I think this is supposed to be maybe another picture on this side. So you could have, again, a picture that's evocative of something that you're talking about, or it could be another photo of you. But in this section, this is where you might put your why. I believe that we should wake up every day feeling as young as as possible, or you know, whatever fits into your your who I help and how statement and how you want to express how you help people, right? Put that in a nice big copy here, and then share a little bit of your why in a section like this, right? There's more opportunity again here for testimonials. Again, if you have them, absolutely use them. You could always remove for now, hide this, so it turns red, or you could even delete it entirely if that's not where you're at, right? And then finally, we want to look at some different ways to give them next steps, right? So work with me could look like a number of things. This is a section that you could use. You could choose to use this or not. But essentially, what we're doing here is we're going to say, here's how you could learn more. You could maybe connect a lead magnet here. You would be linking off to a free thing on another page on your website. Maybe this goes to your event page, maybe one of these goes to your social, right? And then finally, down here at the bottom, this is the lead mag, or the the lead form that we want to have on this page. This might be where you are actually offering the thing that you planned to offer for this page, right? And so this might be, you know, are you ready to, you know, take that next step? I offer free consults. Enter your information here, and we'll set up a time to talk, right? And then the settings, of course, on this page under leads is where you would put any additional information you want. You've got name, email, et cetera, that you would want to include. And then, of course, you know, you're gonna want to double check your formatting, make sure it looks the way that you want to. I imagine you're probably going to do a fair amount more with this with this design for yourself. You know, maybe changing some of the background images. And by the way, you will find down at the bottom, if you do use this template, that there are Canva templates that are included, if you wanted to use this one exactly. Now, a couple of best practices that I want to make sure that we're super clear on. You'll notice, like I mentioned before, that paragraphs are often just a sentence or two sentences, right? And that's because big blocks of chunky text are not very easy for the eye to move through on a screen. So we want to have a lot of space in between, and when in doubt, create an additional section. So if your story gets particularly long in one part or another, you might take one part of it and have it in a section, and then take something that could really be quotable or a particularly impactful statement and put that as a headline. So just as a quick example here, you know, maybe I I'm talking quite a bit in this section, but then I want to break it up a little bit, and I want to transition part of the story. So what I would do here is maybe grab a footer, like, or a header, rather, a thin header here, could maybe give it a contrasting background, give it obviously, make sure that the text can kind of pop off. And then you could have some kind of thing here that you say that transitions the story, right? So right? So and then this happened, and then you can get into another section, right, where you maybe tell a little bit more of your story, right? Don't be afraid to kind of play around with positioning of things, because really what your goal is when someone is on a page is for them to stay there, engage with what's there, and then ultimately take action on what's there. So it's best for you to have less stuff in a visible section that they can see on a page at any point in time, so that they are encouraged to keep scrolling, right? This is why paragraphs and copywriting are sentences. It's better to have a sentence in a section, make them move to the next section, read the next sentence, and so on, right? You don't want to be absolutely nuts with that, but you you get the gist, right? Good websites are are built so that it's easy for your eye to flow through the content, right? And this one already has animations, and it's already mobile responsive, which is pretty great. And then finally, you can see that the the form embeds right down here at the bottom, which is great. Now, this is a footer, a custom footer. If you have a custom footer set up for your site, we can actually remove this one that's built into this template. But if you, if you don't have a custom footer already, this would be one that you could certainly modify and use to your liking. Now, one more thing before I get into Q and A and our live help today. If you are someone who is at seed or starter with Get Oiling, then there is one place that you want to make sure you go, and at the very least, put your bio, all right? And if you have basic and higher with Get Oiling, you should still do this, and I'm gonna tell you exactly what to do, right? So we're gonna go to my story and photo. And that's right over here. You're going to add your photo here, and you're going to say something like, hello, I am whatever your name is, right? This is what you can put in your story headline, and then you pop your bio in here. Now, if you have an about me page created, then you can use your bio, and then you could say, read more here. And we could maybe link that to our about page. And let's find that about, probably, I think we have it. Here we go, about me. And we'll say, read more here. Insert, and I'm gonna make that a button. Right? And there we go. So if we say read more here, this is our bio. When they click this, it can take them over to the about page where they get the full story, right? And that's for you if you have basic or higher. If you don't, if you're at seed or starter, you're just getting started with this, you're not ready to build an about me page, you're not ready to build a personal website, that's fine. Simply put your bio right here and have a call to action at the end that says get in touch because on this my story and photo page, it's automatically going to include a button that pops up your contact form. All right? And then you can choose to have this show up at the bottom of your landing pages, your blog posts and events, your blog archive and event list pages. And so that way, anytime someone is on one of those pages on your site, maybe you're promoting your event, or you've shared a blog post, if they scroll to the bottom of the page, they see your bio, and of course, if you have an about page, you can, of course, direct them off to your about page from that bio, right? So you're essentially using this as a bio section for your website. All right, so let me get into let's get into some questions here. So should my bio be written in the third person? If you are intending to to have other people talk about you frequently, then yes, write it in third person. There's no harm in writing it in first person, but but it is more helpful if if you are going to, like, basically, that the point of the bio is for someone to get quick information about you, but also to help others talk about you more effectively. So it can be very helpful if that is a a goal of yours. Donna asked, are emails sent en masse, such as a monthly newsletter? Yes, if you choose to. So you would be choosing the contacts that you want to send something to, and then you would send that en masse. Yeah, so like a monthly newsletter, yes. You don't, you think your contacts are getting emails in the spam file, thus they don't see them. So if you could tell me a little bit more, Donna, about what you are sending and who you're sending it to, then then we may be able to get a little clearer on that. Another thing that you may want to do is reach out to our support team, and they can help you with getting set up with a custom email server. You will need your own email address and domain name for this. That will help you a lot where it comes to not getting into the spam folder. And we do have a course called Email Marketing Mastery. So if you want to really learn the ins and outs of this stuff, I'll show you exactly where to go to get it. It's in the Success Academy. Online resources and courses, email marketing mastery. So Donna, I would highly recommend that you check out what's in here because it's gonna cover all of the best practices in depth, and it will walk you through those steps of reaching out to your customers, and I have entire systems that you can follow, including templates to reach out to your customers with monthly newsletters. So I think this would be really, really helpful for you, and it would maybe answer a lot of the questions that you might have about that. Yeah, so one of the things, and I do talk about this in Email Marketing Mastery, Donna, is you want to make sure that the people that you are sending to are people who have given you express permission to send that kind of stuff. And so I walk you through the process of obtaining that permission so that you can get more people who are who are wanting to get those emails, and therefore you will be much more, much less likely in the future to land in spam. Okay, let me see, we have, I believe, Allison signed up for a live work review, so I'll bring you out to chat. How can we help? I think this is you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. Yeah.
So after last week's fourteen day reset and all the goodies that came with that, I had already accumulated some things, like Jackie had put up some stuff in the group. I created a campaign from Tammy's Project Broadcast texting campaign. But obviously, I don't have Project Broadcast, so I had to convert it. So I feel like I have so many things, and I think Jackie even mentioned in the Facebook group that something she had put out is not necessary anymore because the fourteen day reset people did it. So I kind of want to consolidate my fourteen day reset because it's hard to know. I mean, I feel like over the years, I've accumulated so many different things, and it's hard to keep track. I'm so thankful that Greg put in there the date edited to sort things. That has been a lifesaver. So thank you very much for that. And then I wanted to add a fourteen day reset header to my homepage. But the fourteen day reset aren't really my colors. I don't know how I would add that, or if I need to redo my homepage. So, okay, those are my two.
Got you. So where the fourteen day reset is concerned, and I think what Jackie was mentioning, like, I think she actually I think Jackie made a fourteen day reset vault, and and that's something that is in our Get Oiling community. It is something that she has shared for free. But she made that before the fourteen day reset, the big group made their own vault and released it to for everyone to use. So in the grand scheme of things, the more duplicable and also easier, simpler thing to do is to send your people to the fourteen day reset vault, not on your own site, but on the fourteen day reset site. And to use the resource bundle from last week to send people there. And all that includes is a page on your site that sends them there. There's no forms. You don't have to connect them to a vault on your site. It sends them there, and it also has those links that are embedded on on the page that will have people ordering Young Living product from you directly. So that's what I would do. I would just, if you want to make your life super easy, and you don't have unlimited vaults, and you want people to actually go into a vault where there are hundreds of people interacting, then I would delete the the additional vault. If you really want to have it, obviously, Jackie did a great job with it, by the way. It's it's nice. But the but but the more duplicable and easier thing to do would be to just leverage the big team thing that's happening right now, the the viral phenomenon. So so you can release that vault, and you could reclaim the bundle if you want to, maybe delete the existing resources if you've done anything with it, and then just use them as they're designed. And the the buttons and the text and stuff like that that's on that page, the the one that that I gave you guys, that's the text that's on the page is going to show up the same as whatever your presets are in your account. So if you've preset a certain So if you've preset a certain size, you know, of a font or a certain typeface, then that's going to show up automatically. And then if you want to add it to your menu, then all you have to do is just add a new menu item and then make that page that you've claimed as as one of the menu items on your website. Does that make sense?
I think I may have done a bunch of that already. Maybe you'd be willing to look and check, but I think I also have Jackie's vault. But I think I have the page, I added a menu item like you said, and I hope I added the right page to go to the YL thing, not Jackie's vault.
Okay, let me find you here real quick and we'll bring you up. Okay. Fourteen day resets.
Yeah, and I'd like to add some sort of header that points to this page from my main page and I wasn't quite figuring out how to do that.
Well, you have it right up here in in the in the menu right here.
And is that the right page?
Yeah, this is the sneak peek. And it's on your site. And when they scroll down, they can add this to their loyalty order and you can actually see if you look, I don't know if you can see it down at the very, very bottom left side of my screen. It's it's inserting your member number, right? So that's already coded up for you. And this is actually, if they click this, it's going to take them to the fourteen day reset website where the testimonials are here. And if they come here and they haven't set up their first order, it says head over here, it pops back up here to order. And if they want to join the Facebook group, this will go to the Facebook group. And if they want to join the fourteen day reset vault, they can click here. And now they're on the fourteen day reset site, they can follow the instructions and log into the vault. You have, you actually have it set up exactly as I would recommend it.
Okay. Now, would you recommend adding a header to my homepage? That makes that a bigger deal than just the homeschooling stuff?
I don't know that I would necessarily make it a header on your website. You're probably going to be
I mean, a section.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could do that. Yeah, you could absolutely do that. I would put in maybe like just a two part section, just like this one. And and maybe grab an image from the fourteen day reset. Or maybe even from from your reset sneak peek here, there's this, the one on their page. You know, you you could grab any kind of image here. And then, yeah, you could just create a two part one and actually the copy that you can use in the saved reply that you would have claimed. There's a little bit of copy in there. It's not, you know, voluminous copy or anything like that, but it is something that you could use to kind of borrow some language if you wanted to, and that is.
And that seems pretty sparse that I think I know which one you're talking about. It's just a list of like five things.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, get started now and you'll get access to. Yeah, so you could use this as a starting point if you wanted to.
Okay. And then where on my website would you recommend it? On that homepage? Like should it be right underneath the purple bar or right before a little about me? I kind of want it more towards the top. Unless you disagree. Or maybe I should make those three columns down the bottom, make it a four column and put reset down there.
I mean, there's no reason why you couldn't just have its own section right here, perhaps. Excuse me. The thing about this is is we we want to make sure that we are really congruent with our messaging. And while we know that the fourteen day reset could help the homeschool mom, people are coming here and landing on your page because they heard you talking about something probably mom or homeschool mom related. And so they're they're looking for that kind of information here. And so if we come out swinging with, you know, here's all the things you can get if you join this health challenge, that's going to feel a little out of place. And so it's better to give them a little bit about you first. And of course, if they're curious, they could always click this fourteen day reset by all means. But but it's it's better to kind of welcome them with context and then give them a reason why they might want to choose one of the other options on this page. So I would just put it maybe right down here. I think four sections here with the volume of copy you have would be a little bit too busy. So I would feel free to to make it its own two part section where you maybe have an image and then you tell a little bit about, you know, maybe give some context. So instead of saying you'll get all these things, which you do have, you know, that brief bullet list that you can work with, ease into it with something like, you know, as a mom, I struggle with this, that and the other. And, you know, I got invited to join this challenge and after fourteen days, here's what's, you know, here's how it changed for me. If you want to know more, head over here, right? And so you can make that a section here. And and so that way, it's on your homepage and it's also up here. But generally speaking, people are going to find it because you're talking about it, right? Your blog post is talking about it, your social post is talking about it. And so you'd be giving instructions, right? Go to my website and click fourteen day reset, you'll see it at the top. This is perfect. It's right up there, right? It's easy to find. So but I I wouldn't center it like up here at all because that's detracting from your ability to connect with your person on what they actually have in common with you, which isn't the reset, it's your perspective.
So if I shorten the copy in those three columns, would I want to add it to a fourth column? Or do you think a separate section is still best?
I would do a separate section probably because four is is kind of a lot. If you're going to have any copy at all, it can, it can get a little, it can get a little crowded really kind of quickly. Three is kind of a sweet spot for that.
Oh, and then and also in my back office, how do I go back and how do I know which things I can delete from the fourteen day reset? Because I just, there's just so much.
Yeah, so I would just the vault, just you don't need a fourteen day reset vault. Now, I don't know what all was in that resource bundle. So here's, here's what I would do, actually. Let's just go find the resource bundle and that'll actually take you to where you need to go. So if we go to resource bundles and we go to my claimed. It's probably this one, fourteen day reset vault. And so you can see each one of these. And so what you could do is just go and open this in a new tab and then just delete the resource, right? So you don't need the vault, the online class, and you don't need the pages or that campaign. So this is just basically your your map to go and find those things and remove them if you're not going to use them.
About the landing page, is the sneak peek page more the landing page now?
This is a completely different vault. So the the page the one that you have set up on your website, this one right here is the one that that we created for you, that we created alongside the fourteen day reset team. So this is the one that you're using and this is the one I would want you to keep. This is the additional one down here, this one that you had claimed called fourteen day reset vault. So I would just remove those. Obviously, take a look at the copy that's in those because there may be some things that you might want to use somewhere else. But I know for sure you wouldn't be needing the vault and the online class or any landing page that takes them into a vault because you're going to be pointing off of your website for that.
Gotcha. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure thing. Thanks for coming out. Okay, Rosio, how can I connect the fourteen day reset through Get Oiling link together? So if you actually watch last week's training on the fourteen day reset and the resource bundle that we've provided, we actually give instructions on that and kind of show how everything connects together. But the short answer is you would have a page just like the one that Allison has. Or if you are at seed or starter and Get Oiling and you don't have dedicated website pages, it's totally fine. There are saved replies that you can use and and those links. So you could use those to send an email or send a text that would send an invitation to the fourteen day dash reset dot com web address where you want to send people. Because that is ultimately where you want people to go. That's going to it's going to connect them either to the vault if they want to be in a private space or to the Facebook group where they can connect with over 10,000 people if that is what they want to do. So you guys, I will be creating a PDF version of these slides. I'll be sure to put those in the description. And I'm really excited to see what you create. This is our last call for questions if you have any before we get going. I hope that you create a bio for yourself this week and put it into your my story and about section, put it on your social media profiles and then link to your about me page if you create one so that people can dig deeper, you could start that sort of virtual imaginary conversation with your person so that at the close of it, they're excited to take their next steps. Thank you, guys, for being here. We will be back here at same time next week. Till then, we'll see you in the Facebook group. Have a great week, everybody.